Give me a dad, you want to even curse.
Hello Jim.
Who's that? Oh, David Wiles?
Yeah, good afternoon.
Cindy.
Hey, hey.
How are y'all doing?
We're great.
Good. Glad to have you with us today.
Nice invite. Thank you.
I'm told by my legal counsel that I can start anytime before or after, but can't start anytime before. Isn't that right Doug? Yeah, he's on. We keep him on Zoom most time. We won't let him get off of the.
That's true, Mayor. It's just like a tennis tournament. You can start, can't start early. Can't default a man for kind of like.
Somebody's got a little dollar market somewhere. Yeah, let's see. We got. We got. Bob Weagle, we got Haley, we got Louise. Where's Rusty? There he is. He was on my page too. Sorry about that Rusty.
I thought I was your first page guy.
Well, you may have been. You just got deleted to the second page. Hey Gray, how are you?
Great guys.
Got somebody on an iPhone. iPhone, if you would please identify yourself.
Uh, you sure? This is Phil Trela.
No, I see you. I've got somebody.
Oh, somebody else?
Phone.
Somebody else.
It just says iPhone. If you would please identify yourself.
It's Mike King, wow.
Okay, there.
All right, Mike, thank you.
Wow, is that your dog? No, your dog sounds louder than that, doesn't he?
It's not my dog.
I hear a little doggy barking in the background.
That is our watchdog.
Oh, well, you're excused. You can have that.
Thank you. I'll put it on mute, Jim.
Yeah, let's see. I think we're ready to get started. Let's all stand and where's Larry's flag? We'll get Larry's flag and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I saw a lot of midsections on that one, including mine. Well, welcome to the regular board meeting, Wednesday, April the 21st. And I want to change the agenda just slightly. I'd like to move. The David and Cindy Wiles Exemplary Service Award presentation to the first before we get to the public. Comments, because I think that's not only that it's very important, but it's, but it also will give David and Cindy a chance to. Not pre put up with the rest of our meeting if they don't, if they don't want to stay. So with that, I'd like to read a couple of things and, and first of all, say I'm so happy to see David and Cindy here. It's a special day. Since its initial presentation of the David and Cindy Wiles Exemplary Service Award. About three months ago, David. He approached me on the golf course and said, I'd like to do something special for our police department. He, as so many other residents, feel that the police department has so much respect and heartfelt thanks for the job that they do. So with that. I talked to Lyle and we already had a. A officer of the quarter. And we felt like this needed to be something more special than that. We, we, we have also the quarters every month because everybody is so special at the police department, but we thought. Raising the bar a bit and having the exemplary service award presented to it. And we want to thank David and Cindy Wiles for their extremely generous gift that allows us to fund this. I won't say in perpetuity, but a long time anyway. And with that, I'd like to read a couple of significant pieces of the award. This award recognizes an act of courage. An outstanding performance under unusually difficult or dangerous circumstances, whether or not in connection with the performance of assigned duties. The criteria is the following criteria is applicable for granting the exemplary service award. Sustain superior performance while under threat of physical attack or harassment. And or maintaining composure under extreme turmoil. Or an individual act of courage or exceptional performance at the risk of personal safety. This is an award that the United States Department of State awards for heroism. And with that, I'd like to turn this over to our new police chief, Charles Williams, to make the initial presentation. Chuck.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm just going to read the, the first nomination. This is something that I sent to the. Exemplary Service Award Fund Committee members, which is myself, the mayor, Lee. Lyle and Beth. And we all voted and felt that. This candidate was very deserving of this award. So this is the nomination and I'll read it as it is written. On April 6th, 2021 Detective Thomas Sexton located and arrested. A suspect at the Green Hills YMCA. This suspect was accused of stalking a Bellmead resident. And had displayed a pattern of unstable behavior for the last couple of months. This suspect led officers on multiple, multiple pursuits, and yet he avoided capture every time. On one of those pursuits, he ended up damaging one of the patrol vehicles. And that occurred on April the 4th, actually on Easter Sunday. This detective Sexton, Detective Sexton worked diligently. To locate this suspect and was able to confront him in the parking lot of the YMCA in Green Hills. Upon that confrontation, a struggle ensued and Detective Sexton was able to keep him from getting into his vehicle and get away yet again. Detective Sexton's actions were vital in getting this suspect off the streets and into custody. For those reasons, I am proud to award Detective Sexton with the first. Ever City of Bellmead David and Cindy Wilds Exemplary Service Award.
Oh.
Congratulations, Tom.
I know Tom is on there someplace because I got him here under some false pretenses. I shouldn't tell him that now because he did a lot of work to get for policy. He had to report for me to get on this. Tom, I see you down the bottom. You have anything you want to say? We, we just appreciate everything you did, did for that and have done for us in the past. But this was just exemplary. You have any comments? You're muted.
There you go. I did something, Mayor, that you've been trying to do for years. It's mute me and I've muted myself. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Wiles. This is a great opportunity for the Bellmead Police Department and it actually is, is an honor. Actually, it's a little misnomer. It's, I went to the Y and worked out and obviously things didn't work out as I expected. I also like to thank Officer David Wright. David was Johnny on the spot. This gentleman was. Impervious to my charm. He was impervious to. Pepper spray, but David come up and he wanted to get in the car pretty, pretty quickly after that point. But again, I'd like to thank you all, and this is a wonderful thing that you're doing for the police officers and, and I know that I do appreciate it and I'm sure that everybody else afterwards will. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. It's just, it's just great. And there with this award comes up some, some funds that you might have some use for. And so we have to maybe surprise you with that a little bit later on. But anyway, thank you so much, Tom. This has been great. And again, Cindy and David, thank you all so much for making this award possible. It will not be something that will be given on a regular basis. It's when something. That's out of the ordinary takes place. And we certainly felt like that this was out of the ordinary. And Tom, thank you. And thank you to the Wiles. We appreciate it so much. And we, we hope to be able to continue to do this award in the future when we have a more exemplary. Service, but we have great service anyway. So anyway, thank you all very much and we appreciate. All that you do for us. Any, any other comments? Cindy and David, y'all have any comments? You got to unmute there. You got to unmute if you're going to do that now. Get that dog quiet.
All right. So yeah, Jim, as you said, we, Cindy and I. Talk often about how grateful we are to have the Bellmead Police Force and. About what, what might we do to evidence that? And you and I had those conversations. Out in the morning sunshine and, and. It's just, it's our privilege to be able to. Participate in this and, and it's, I think it's very fitting that Detective Sexton gets the first award because. We were burgled a few years ago and he was right on the spot helping us at that time. So. We're very pleased that he's the first recipient.
And y'all did not know who the recipient was going to be, did you? Nobody leaked, nobody leaked that out. So.
No, no, had no idea.
Well, Cindy, good to see you. Thank you all very much. You all are welcome to stay on for the rest of the meeting as you are. Tom, I think I did mislead you a little bit. You, you did exactly what I wanted you to do is write that report up for me, but at the same time, you don't need to make any kind of verbal report unless you want to.
You want to withdraw that one, Mayor.
Thanks, thanks again.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. With that, we will. Move on to the public comments portion. Do we have someone from the public or anyone from the public would like to make comments at this time?
Yes.
Gray, go ahead. You may make yours. I think Philip wants to make his after, after yours.
Thank you. I'll be brief. First of all, thank you all for putting the agenda and the packets and last month's. Meeting minutes up. It's very helpful when you want to attend these and see what's going on and make sure. So thank you for that. Also, I would like to request that the city do, in the Bellmead together. I noticed that they're talking about stormwater or I think one of the agenda items is stormwater issues, but in light of the last. Big rain, I would request that we move that to a very top priority because. I know that for years we have been sort of minimizing and. Not spending a lot on. Stormwater issues and Canterbury's got a problem with something that's, that's very old and it's grandfathered in. And I'm sure throughout the city, we've got some grandfathered in problems that are not. You know, they, they wouldn't be allowed now, but I think that it would behoove the city to work with individuals and. On public and, and try to work with private property also and change our regs so that we can. Protect the property as far as stormwater goes throughout the city. Because it's, it's more and more and more a problem. And it's not just new. Construction, it is just continued problems and, and stormwater roll off and, and from sump pumps and that sort of thing.
Thank you, Gray. I will say that Bellmead Together is moving along quite swiftly now. And so we're going to be seeing some. Action reports out of that pretty soon now. So we've had, we just got off another Zoom call just about two hours ago. So.
May I request, can, can the, can the public be on those or be aware, be made aware of those? Zoom calls and committee calls just to, just to listen in on what's going on with that committee? Because we don't have an opportunity any other way.
I'm going to pass that to Louise and let Louise respond to that.
Absolutely. All, all the meetings are public. People sometimes call me about it, but. We can certainly make it a Zoom link. Nothing's being decided in the meeting. We're kind of pulling together some things to present. So, but, but yes, absolutely. The answer is absolutely yes.
I understand that. We just have no idea. It, it might. I mean, we just don't even have any idea when, when you're even meeting. And, and again, I recognize that we can't weigh in, but.
You can certainly weigh in every minute. We do, we do have an update video on the website. We did an update video.
Seen that. I don't know how to update, but I look at it on a pretty regular basis. But I'm just, it would be nice. I mean, in keeping with all of our sunshine laws, just to be notified of when those committee meetings are, because it's my understanding and Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, we can come to any meetings.
Of course. Yes, absolutely. I'll make sure. Absolutely. Yes. It's a good point. Thank you. You're the good point.
Thanks, Gray. Philip?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. And team members of Nashville, and of course, Mr. and Mrs. Wilds, I share your high regard for the police force and my experiences are likewise extremely. Positive. So thank you, Chief Williams. Look forward to getting to know you better as well. By way of background. You know, I'm, let me introduce myself. I'm Phil Trela. I live at 328 Walnut Drive, which is diagonally across the street from. 325 Walnut Drive, which is a matter of. Real interest to me and to the neighbors. I've been a 43 year Nashville resident, 20 years of which in Bellmead and the Balance and Green Hills. So I, I've seen real change in both communities. I guess that's probably one of the reasons why I live in Bellmead now and, and not Green Hills. And. The reason that I wanted to speak tonight is twofold. One is, you know, we had no ability to rebut accuracies or ask any questions at the. Historic zoning commission standards for meeting of last week. And. You know, so we see several inconsistencies and, you know, there's, as I said, no ability for rebuttal. And let me go down my list very quickly. Several of the neighbors tried to call in and I've been told that they were denied entry. I don't know for what reason. So that's the first inconsistency. When, you know, you all received a couple of misses from me, at least three over the last four weeks. And. Frankly, gentlemen and ladies, I am eager to get out from under this. Troubled time and it's eating at me and I'd like to pass it on to your care and, and attention in going forward. To, you know, Mrs. Ms. Whitson's personal denial of conflicts of interest and, and of course, the counsel for Mr. Cates, the developer. Stating such conflicts were okay and Bellmead and Nashville surprised me to no end. And. The conflict of interest is by definition drawing pecuniary or financial gain while serving on a board committee commission that evaluates or decides your petition. Feels very uncomfortable. I know, sure, shoot, and we wouldn't want to have judges or anybody on, certainly on my staff. Have such conflicts. And then I looked, took it to the next step. And then if an architect. Recused himself, then he didn't vote and the historic zoning commission violates their charter because there would be no architect on the committee. And, and yet he's still an advocate for the builder. You know, and I look at it personally, if on offense. How would, you know, surely somebody would enjoy at least some modest unfair advantage. And. Let me show you. I would never permit myself to be put in such a position to decide financial gain or loss for a friend. Too much angst. So no conflict is asserted. And if that's the case, let's quantify the matter. Let's ask Mr. Ferris provide a list of all projects. And revenue to his firm over the past three years. This measure would certainly present the full magnitude of our quandary. And then on with respect to notice, only published rules noticed again by Ms. Whitson and Mr. Patterson. In fact, the historic zoning commission heard the disorganized unsophisticated neighbors on the nine March call and. It would have been easy for them to have deferred their decision one month to, to allow the neighbors to collect their thoughts and present an organized position. Instead, they made the decision to allow. The teardown to move on. And by the way, within a few days, the house was demolished. And, you know, I. Looked back at Mr. Patterson's previously. Jealously guarded moratorium of no teardowns from 2018 and 2020. Well. That's certainly changed. And as I listened to the historic zoning commission meetings, I observed other deferrals without hesitation when points needed to be made. Ms. Whitson made it clear she didn't want other appeals, which she viewed as a waste of time. And this feels disingenuous to someone serving in a public position. And. Another shocking. Situation was esteemed commissioner, Mrs. Louise Bryan made a passionate and most logical. Case for the lack of fitness of the proposed house at 325. You know, cottage with such high ceilings resonated with me and. You know, she, she outperformed me by leaps and bounds and yet she was ignored. The city commissioner and the only comment again was. The tall style can be attractive, not is attractive. It can be her attractive, but not definitive. And. You know, from our position, it doesn't fit by any measure of the historic zoning commission. And. You know, frankly, we had other professional advisors accessible, but we had no ability to refute any of the points made. And both the architect and attorney that I engaged believed strongly in the neighbor's presentation, but were not heard. In fact, no competing views were actually heard or appeared to be of any interest. The builder, on the other hand, was fully heard. I don't know. This is, this is, I guess, both a coincidence and an inconsistency. Within days of the nine March historic zoning commission, a memo was sent expressing the attempt to appeal by my neighbors. The vast majority, though no, not all. Supported us. Many wanted to stay in the background. Nonetheless, Mr. Patterson saw fit to fast track the building permit. He told Mrs. Wade that stormwater analysis would take as long as 60 days. Magically permit issued before formal appeals could be made. Have loads of questions here too, as you might imagine. And as I watched the concrete trucks empty their loads, I asked myself, was this simply bad judgment, bad faith, a gross error or other? How does this precipitous action serve public good? Legally, this independent action further compromised our position. I, I can't help but ask why. And the historic zoning commission did not provide examples ever of comparables on the street or even in Bellmead. I comparison shop and as do all of us for clothes, cars, everything, yet none was given, none were given. Well, there may be a few like the proposed, perhaps, and perhaps none categorically. No houses dense. On the lot exists on Walnut Drive. No house towers over neighbors as this one does. And it ain't no cottage. So the, you know, as I looked at it, I was watching and I think of the developer, Mr. Cates, and I think he played, he played this perfectly. I frankly admire it. It was a beauty to watch and. Had the right lawyer, the right architect and right relationships. Bad for Walnut and the naive inexperienced novices. The neighbors on Walnut were like little leaguers batting against big league pitching with no umpire.
Bill, I'm going to ask you to speed up this one.
I, I will. I have one, one or two more comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It would be nice to survey all of Bellmead on their experiences with zoning, with the historic zoning commission and other agencies who serve the local citizenry. Let me state very simply, the voices of our neighbors have not been heard. Mr. Patterson slyly noted his receipt of letters in support of the construction and thus through innuendo suggesting no neighbors, neighbors supported our petition. We never denied that. Read what was written in prior emails. Another example of inconsistency seems like a doctor for the historic zoning commission identifying a flawed patient diagnosis months later and. However, to save face, did nothing allowing the patient to die. I feel like that patient. Commissioners, please take action to be sure your citizens are treated properly on all matters. Always look for ways to improve services, improve public trust and improve community interaction. Do not allow any other neighborhood to suffer the dismal fate of Walnut. You have my brief rebuttal and my passionate plea to eliminate any appearance of conflicts at any level on public matters.
Thank you, Phil. I will say that we will be having an executive session at the end of this meeting where I believe some of that will be addressed. So.
I would be delighted to participate and serve in any way you deem to be appropriate, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Or any other public servants.
Thank you. With that, we will, any other members from the public want to make any comments?
Yes, sir. Marshall Sanders from 310 Walnut Drive, and I'll make this brief. It pretty much also echoes what Gray Thornburg discussed earlier. But in light of last week's outcome at the historic zoning commission meeting, Walnut Drive currently has a property under construction that is. At nearly the highest elevation on Walnut Drive. And is the owner of the property at the lowest elevation of all of Bellmead. I am even more concerned now about stormwater on Walnut Drive. Especially if we're going to continue to see Bellmead's approach to stormwater as every neighbor for themselves, which is simply not working. So I would just like to, to make sure that, that we are heard from the city. We, we know that the city addressed Walnut Drive neighbors in the past. Or I can't say I know that allegedly this happened. Apparently the neighbors were reached out to about stormwater plans and no one on Walnut actually remembers that, that conversation happening. So we would like to. Make sure that Walnut Drive is, is considered. As we know, in Bellmead's together plan, that we know that Walnut Drive is already on the list for, to address stormwater. But we just want to make sure that. That we have the same opportunities as our neighbors on Royal Oaks Drive had. They have storm drains lining down their street and. It's, it's really concerning that we don't have similar mitigation efforts here. The weekend of March 27th to 28th, our house was, got stormwater as well as the houses, three houses along the same side of the street and all that came from runoff. That didn't come from upstream. So. This is really a considerable issue that'll only get worse. So just wanted to, to mention that we really wanted that, that due diligence done on Walnut Drive, especially in light of this new house being built. Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to make any comments? Pat, see, I see you back there so quiet, whatever. Any, you make any comments?
No, no. Not about Walnut. It's a great story.
We will, with that, we'll close the public comments portion and, and open the regular meeting and with the. Request for approval of the minutes of the meeting of March 17th. Any comments on the minutes? Motion for approval?
Mayor, I mo, I move that we approve the minutes of the March 17th meeting as presented.
Thanks for us. Is there a second?
I'll second. Haley Dale.
Thank you, Haley. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, roll call vote.
Louise Bryan, aye.
Haley Dale, aye.
Jim Hunt, aye.
Gore, aye. Bob, you're muted.
We'll give him a chance to unmute. We don't need his vote, but we sure want it. Where'd Bob go? He must be on my second page now. We got.
He is, he's now out. I think he accidentally clicked out.
Okay. We don't need him for this. We may need it for other votes. So we'll move on. That motion has been approved or the minutes have been approved. That motion has been approved, or the minutes have been approved, and we'll move on to the next item. And that is Public Works, Larry Smith.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Anybody have any questions, concerns concerning the report?
Looks like a lot of the same things. You got dead animals on the road and all kind of stuff like that, Larry, that you got to take care of.
Yes, sir.
Anything out of the ordinary?
No, sir.
Mayor, I always love to hear a compliment of our, our team from a neighbor, and one of my neighbors certainly had wonderful things to say about Larry and Dylan and the entire staff when they had an issue with their septic system. So that's just always good news to hear.
I know Larry likes to hear those, too, because his, his staff, his staff works hard at trying to keep everybody happy, and that's a tough job to do. Anything else from Larry there? Larry, you want, you want to comment about the change order for Harding Place? And at the same time, I know Lyle may have a couple of pictures he wants to show, too. Lyle, you want, can you show those pictures? There we go.
Yeah, this, sorry, Mr. Mayor. This is looking toward Bellmead Boulevard. They're ready to, they're forming that up, and they'll be pouring that in the morning.
That's on Jackson, looking, on Jackson.
That's Jackson going toward, toward Bellmead Boulevard. Yes, sir.
I got you.
And that is the section, part of the section over at Linwood. That is actually in front of Mr. Patel's house.
Yeah.
Okay. This is the other side of Mr. Patel's, where we did drainage work.
So on the left-hand side, that's where you went over that, went over that.
Storm drain pipe.
Storm drain, okay.
Yes, sir.
Wow, look at this.
And that is coming off of Linwood, coming around. And there's a long view of it looking down from Linwood. I'm on Harding Place from Linwood.
I know, I know you're happy about that, and I'm sure the, the other residents of Harding Place are very pleased that this progress is taking place. You want to go over that, go over that change order?
Yes, sir. What happened on the change order? We were trying to, we've got that swell, that swell at the end of Bellmead Boulevard, and the engineer, originally, we talked about putting a steel plate, but the engineer felt that we could put a pipe. And when we got into actually laying it out, we were not going to meet the ADA specifications by doing the pipes. So we need, we needed to do the steel plate instead. And this is a powder coated diamond plate that will be, that the water will flow under instead of having the pipes. And it's a $1,550, $1,550 change order to go from the PVC pipes to the steel plate.
Is this structurally as sound or sounder?
Sounder.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And we'll have better flow under this than we would have with the pipes.
Okay. Any questions to Larry from?
I've got one, Mr. Mayor. Larry, it's, it may be on here, I'm not sure, but we received an email from Anna Kristen Yarborough about the creek running behind Westover and Inquirer, and her finding some wires that were laid underwater.
Yes, yes, ma'am. That, that's a wholly, another issue. What it was, it was fiber drops that AT&amp;T, a subcontractor for AT&amp;T, screwed, actually screwed the boxes to the trees and ran them across the creek.
Wow.
We reached out to AT&amp;T, notified them, sent them pictures, and my understanding, they're supposed to be rectifying that.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll check, thank you for handling that. I'll check in with her and make sure they're doing that. Thank you.
Any other Public Works questions? Larry, you got a couple of other things, too. The left turn lane at Jackson. You want to discuss that? Well, first of all, we got to go back to change order. We need to approve that change order, $1,500 to the, to the original sidewalk phase two project. Is there a motion to, to approval on that?
I'll move to approve the change order I submitted.
Thank you.
A second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the $1,500 change order? No other questions? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye. Roll call.
Louise Bryan, aye.
Haley Dale, aye.
Jim Hunt, aye.
Rusty Moore, aye.
Bob's back, but he's muted now. Bob, you on mute? That's my telephone.
Bob Weagle, aye.
Call from Joe Davis.
Okay, I'm sorry about that phone. I was trying to, I was trying to mute myself. If I'd done that, then I'd have had to turn the meeting over to Rusty again, so.
Jim.
I'm not ready to do that yet, Rusty, okay?
Jim, this is Bob.
Yeah. We got you. I think we got it. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Bob. Unanimously, unanimously passed this. Thank you. Okay, Larry, the.
I guess I don't worry about it.
The, the left turn, Beth, you, yeah.
I'm just, I sent you all just this afternoon before the meeting a memo and the documents from Stansel. Have you all had a chance to read the memo?
We decided to get it to 3:30, but that's.
Oh, because Lyle, the memo is included with that. Can you bring it up?
Yeah, there it is. Okay, let's all read that together so we. As you all may know, Stansel has a, has a contract with NES to do their, most of their signaling work, and, and so you can't do much about that. But Beth tells me this is a, this was one of, one of the better quoted Stansel deals, so I shouldn't say that. That makes it feel like that.
Well, I'll just say that Larry and I were pleased with the quote.
Okay, yeah, that's better. Thank you.
That's a nice way of saying that.
We were, we were, we were anticipating it to be higher, so we were very pleased that it came in very close to the budget amount that we had originally estimated, you know, almost a year ago.
But this is, this is the whole, this is the whole nine yards, right?
This is everything. We are just, yeah. Larry, you go ahead and explain.
Yes, yes, sir. This includes everything, the flashing lights, the temporary signage, the signs, the striping, radar detection lights, no more loops on Bellmead Boulevard in the, in the pavement. And it also includes, Patsy will be glad to hear this, this also includes Jackson Boulevard, the lane changes, and a striping down there as well. All of it is included in this. I know it only, it says Jackson, but it includes all of it, Bellmead Boulevard and Jackson, so.
Larry, what, what exactly is the striping you're talking about on Jackson? Because we've gotten a lot of pushback about that center lane on Jackson from residents. Are you?
Okay, this, yeah, the striping that we're talking about will be down at the end of, in the plans, it shows that there's turning, turn arrows that are put in the pavement and of that stuff along those lines. And they have to be in the pavement. It's for the, the MTCD specs.
Okay, so it's required. Yes, got it.
It is required. This is something we do. I know people don't like it. It looks like the interstate, but we have to fall within the MTCD guidelines.
Thank you.
Larry, did you get any kind of notice from Stansel as when they could start, when it would be? How long would it take?
If we approve this, I can get it on the schedule, but he did not, but we're going to, the, the plan is, is quick. If we can approve this, is to try to get it before the, before the next budget year. Hopefully, we can get it on this budget year.
Okay.
It's the plan.
Any questions from commissioners about the budget, about the budget, about the amount, and whatever?
I just wanted to clarify what we were talking about. So what this approval will do is put into place everything we need to not be able to turn left off of Jackson Boulevard onto Harding, and to be able to turn left from Bellmead Boulevard onto Harding.
Correct. Thank you. Exactly right.
That's signage, that signals, that's, I guess, any, any temporary signage that needs to go up to, but the education process, will that?
Right, they're doing all of that.
All of that is included.
Okay. That's great.
Mayor, with great joy, I would like to move approval of this project. So excited about it.
We have a motion from Rusty Moore. Is there a second?
With great joy, I'd like to do that second as well.
Well, Louise, you beat Louise to it. She was trying to get it, but anyway. And I think that, I think that Patsy was trying to second it, too. But anyway, anyway, that was, that's great. So we got a motion and a second. Let's vote on that. Roll call.
Louise Bryan, aye.
Haley Dale, aye.
Jim Hunt, aye.
Rusty Moore, aye.
I, I read his lips. He's still on mute, but I read his lips. He said aye. Thanks, Bob. Let's see, where are we, Dale?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Larry, you've already, you actually did two and five, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Let's talk about this, the traffic calming demo projects. Louise?
Okay, um, we have two demonstration projects, which will take place, be installed April 28th and, and be up for a week until May 5th. A demonstration project is a short term, low cost, and easily reversible project, which mimics a traffic calming design. In this case, at 414 Linwood, we are testing out a chicane. A chicane creates a curve in a street in order to slow down cars. In this case, on Linwood, given that it's two lanes, at certain times, the chicane will create a yield street condition where one car will need to actually stop, let the other car come through. This type of traffic calming device is well used in other cities and all around, all around Europe. Some of you may have seen it. We think some people in Bellmead may not have seen this before. So Chief is very much on, on target and planning to help direct traffic, especially in the first few days. We sent a, a one page, two page description with some graphics to the neighbor, the neighborhood captains on Linwood. There are actually four, and that went out this morning. That's the first one. Big thank you to Larry and Lyle for getting the detail of all this pulled together. The second demonstration project is on 214 Jackson Boulevard. This is testing out a traffic island, which we have in Bellmead and use quite frequently. And this basically narrows both lanes. We still end up at about nine feet on each side, but again, the narrowness encourages drivers to slow down. On this part of Jackson, this could also be an opportunity for beautification. Series has worked hard with a proposed planting list, as well as over time, possibly a branding or landmark. But for now, we're just testing the efficacy of both these projects.
Louise, you want to go to number five about the sidewalk along Harding Pike?
Sure, okay. One of the priorities that the residents responded to in the survey of 2019 was about filling in sidewalk gaps. Based on the studies that Kimlinghorn has done, one of the most impactful sidewalk gap that could be filled is between Bellmead Boulevard along Harding Pike, goes in front of St. George's. So we had a conference call, Zoom call with St. George's and talked to them about, just a little bit about the plan, what we're thinking about. Again, we don't have any, any plans or said recommendations right now, but rather just to understand the actual right of way, the impact of their project. There's a culvert on Harding Pike, and if we were to put a sidewalk along that part of Harding Pike, we would have to garner some private property from St. George's into the right of way, or possibly even for the sidewalk itself, it would be a safer sidewalk if we could get some, some property from St. George's. It was a discussion to just start, start the, start the, the topic with St. George's and make sure we had the right people. We spoke to Craig Lane, senior warden, and the contractor from the parent company. The next step is to see if this is something that, that, that comes up as a priority, and if so, we will continue to talk to St. George's. Steve Casey and Lyle were on the call, very helpful, and talked about the specifics of some of the culvert issues.
Want to say something that they can't hear?
Bob, go on, go back, there you go. He's on mute. Go ahead, Louise, I'm sorry.
So that, that's all, that's all. We were just, we just, we want to engage, you know, St. George's, obviously, it's a big part of their property. Many people at St. George's have come to us and asked for that sidewalk. They want to walk their children to the preschool. They want to walk to church. A sidewalk that leads to a destination like a church, a youth group, a Wednesday night service, or a preschool is, is, is very compelling.
Good.
And any questions?
Louise, I just want to say, I think the demonstration, back to the other subject, the demonstration project, I think is just a great idea, and we, we spend a little bit of time talking about that in the Bellmead Together meetings, but this is an opportunity without spending a lot of money to just see if something will work. So I, I just, I think this is a great approach, and you've worked very hard on it. Thank you.
Thanks, Rusty.
Any other questions? Louise, thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Look forward to hopefully getting some of these projects off the ground quickly. With that, Chief of Police, Charles Williams, better known as Chuck, got the public safety report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. You all have a copy of the police department. There is one change I'd like to bring to your attention. It's on page 19. It's the Cork Clark's Monthly Statistics of March 2021. You'll notice the mileage there for the police department is listed as 31,423. I think that was a typo. The actual mileage should be 21,423. Other than that, the report's staying.
I know, I know Bob Weagle likes to ask a lot of questions, but Chuck, we're going to give you a couple of months to where you're going to get familiar with Bob's questions that he asked, and so you.
Well, I was.
You need to be prepared to answer those.
I seen the mileage increase. I thought, oh, no, here it comes. But we were.
He might still, he may have, he may have a softball one today. Bob, you got a softball question you can ask, ask the chief? Now you're back to, you, you muted, so we wouldn't hear you arguing with your wife, but go ahead now. Get back on, get back on, off, off of mute. All right, Weagle, there we go.
My, only comment I have is that is really on the next page, page 20. To me, that, that says it all, is the, the positive trend and the, and the stats. I think it's very positive. This is all because of our new chief. He's a very positive person, and it rubs off on his officers. Long live the new chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Boy, I tell you what, you better take that toot away you get it, Chuck.
I'm going to take this softball for maybe for more months.
Thank you.
I, I had one question about this report. As, as we're trying to show the community, engage more with the community, I wonder if we could add a column or possibly delete the fingerprints column and start to track when the police force is actually engaged with the community or developing rapport or directing traffic. I'd like to see.
Just like a community contact kind of thing?
Sure, sure, yeah. I think as, as we continue to look at different budget items and ways to, to, to run the city in the next couple of years, I think the police are going to be a big part of that. And I think it behooves us to be sure that the residents actually see the police. With vaccinations on their eyes and weather warming up, it's never, it's never been a better chance to get outside and actually have residents see the police. So Chief, I just think it's a good time. I know the captains have really enjoyed meeting you, and they appreciate that. So I'd like to see if, if we could add, add a column and start to measure how often the police engage with the community.
I think Chief's got some great ideas, too, and I, I would like you to make a report on how many, how many neighborhood watch people you've called on.
Quite, that list is quite lengthy. I think there was close to 40 captains. About half of that, of those meetings have been scheduled, and probably 10 to 12 have been, have actually sat down and talked. The, the captains have been just a wealth of knowledge for me to know what's going on on their street. Nobody knows it better than, than they do, and, and they. and, and they've really been transparent about issues, and I've kind of, kind of laid my vision out to them. They seem to be really on board with kind of the community, community policing that we want to kind of head this department in over the next couple of years. So the meetings have been quite phenomenal, and I got, got quite a few more to go.
Louise, I think that what you were talking about, what Chief talked about, the really same thing for policing, policy of community policing, where you'd be getting out and meeting with the people, meeting them at Palmer Park on meetings, and showing them, they'd be napping with kids and stuff, and teaching them a little bit about how policing goes and that type of thing. And has that been achieved? Well, that. Louise, you were going to say something?
I just think also, even directing traffic in hotspots right now is a good idea. I don't think we have to wait for them to hide in driveways. I think getting out and just directing traffic a couple of days a week would also generate some, some visibility, and also maybe, you know, help with the volume of traffic on the streets.
Good point. I think you're doing a little bit of that up at Harding Place and Bellmead Boulevard, aren't you, and then with the morning backups?
Right, we, we, we've spent some time cycling that light to encourage the traffic flow. Seems to be working pretty well around 7:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the afternoon. Help get the, the school traffic on Harding Place. We're just having a backup sometimes, I think, past West over there. So by leaving that green a little longer, it helps to alleviate the traffic on Harding Place.
Anything else? Bobby's got that license plate hits on there, too.
What's that?
He's got the license plate hits, which you, which you, that was one of the things you kind of pushed for on the, on page, page 22.
Didn't, didn't have but a couple, didn't we?
No, one, well, you know, I, I, that's correct. There were, there were the, one stolen, one stolen plate, two stolen vehicles, and be on the lookout.
Yeah.
Okay. Chuck, anything you want to report on that's a little special, that you're doing, that you enjoy doing, and don't enjoy doing, or?
Well, as we, as we said earlier, the, the block captain meetings, we've, I think we've come up with some pretty good ideas. I know next month, for example, we've talked to the Neighborhood Watch Captain on Deer Park Circle, and I think we're going to, instead of having a shift change at the police department like we typically do, we're going to pick a nice weather day and have our shift change on Deer Park Circle, and invite the community to come out and meet all the officers that are working that night, and that, that had worked that day. So I think we'll see how that goes, and if it goes over pretty well, and we might roll that out to some other streets that can, that can be safely done at.
But that's Anne Marie McNamara. I believe she's also the Neighborhood Watch person for, for Jackson, too, right? Far from Pat's, his portion of Jackson. So she's got a pretty, she's got a group of people that she watches over with pretty good. I've known Anne Marie for about 50 years. Any, anybody got any questions, other questions with Chief? Well, let's move on to health and sanitation. Larry?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Any questions or concerns on the?
Still happy with your staff?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Great group of young men, well, I'll put it.
Larry, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
High water affected this department quite a bit, didn't it?
Yes, sir. What happens is when Metro sewer mains get full, that means that our pumps are pumping, our grinder pumps are pumping against head. We don't have as many pumps on our system anymore, because as we find them, we make them remove them off the grinders. But Metro still has quite a bit of infiltration, and we're pumping against them. So there's usually, usually a high water like that. We usually will have failures shortly thereafter. We didn't have a lot during it, but the, the week following, the last couple of weeks, we've had, we had quite a few failures, and it was due to the high head and the pumps having to work twice as hard.
It didn't necessarily condemn the, the, the pumps, although I saw several of them were, were, were taken out because of high water.
Yes, sir.
Am I right?
Yes, sir.
Anyway, I think you changed that 12 pumps.
Yes, sir.
I counted correctly.
Yes, sir.
So you got hit between Public Works and, and Sanitary, you got hit pretty hard, didn't you?
Yes, sir. We've been quite busy. We've been quite busy.
Yeah.
I don't know who to direct this to, either, either to you, Larry, or, or to Chief, but there were some trees down last night. People, it was, it was maybe, I don't know whether it was a direct wind, a straight, straight line wind, or something came through. Do you know anything about that?
We had, we had no reports of any trees last night. I, I monitored it pretty close as far as, I had no, no one called, or hadn't, none within our, I was expecting it. I was sitting there waiting for it.
It was one, one tree down on, on, on Enquirer, Jane, and Jane and her, and her next-door neighbor, Karen Aaron's, they, they had a tree down. It, that was, that would, just came all of a sudden. It was one of those, I think it may have been, but, and also, I had a strange thing. My fountain, I just filled my fountain up, and my fountain didn't have any water in it this morning, but water was everywhere. I wonder if that's, that wind could have just lifted the water out of there. I'd have to ask Larry on that one. You know anything about that, so?
Nah, it could happen, I guess.
Okay, well, I hope it's that, not something wrong with my fountain. So anyway, thank you. Okay, uh, anything else, Larry? We've got the bid results of the sewer infrastructure improvements, and Beth, and Beth and Larry, I think both can make this report. So Larry, you want to start off?
We, we had, we bid out the project, and we, after contacting multiple bidders, we only had one bidder, and their, their quote, their bid was, I used the word astronomical, was just way off the bean. And we, we want, we were, we want to reject that bid based off that astronomical quoting.
Let me ask a question. Steve, can you elaborate on why? I mean, why was your price 130,000, theirs was almost a million?
Good question.
Yeah, yeah, that is a great question. There's, I mean, I don't know. The only thing I can say is, you know, the fact that we only had one bidder, it seemed that there was a lot of people that were just really busy, that just didn't have the time to do it. The project was, some of the feedback that we got was that it was too large for the plumbing, the small plumbers, but too small for the larger outfits.
Got you.
And this bid that was turned in, I think, was, dare I say, opportunistic. I mean, some of the line items in there were just, I've never seen bids like this before.
You can push Bellmead, but you can't push us that far.
In layman's terms, can you explain to us commissioners what you were asking them to do?
Sure. Yeah, we were asking them to first do some trenching to find out and verify the location of some pipes, and then assuming that those pipes were not there, like we thought they weren't there. The project was to install some pipes to connect previously unconnected sections and upsize some existing pipes, again, to reduce head on the existing pumps pumping into this forced main system, and then to install some valves to give the city more control over being able to isolate portions of the system for repairs and things of that nature. The other thing is, the, the way your system is set up, there's so much, there's not a lot of ability to cut off certain sections and kind of test and see if the head would improve, but, you know, limiting some large loading from coming in from maybe an uphill section, maybe it could be diverted elsewhere and not cause so much head in a lower-lying area of the city. So we're trying to get some of those isolation-type valves installed to help give more control and also improve our ability to model the system for future improvements to the modeling, the modeling that we've done. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Let me say this in a nutshell. It was to install some pipe and some valves. That's, that's really the.
So what's, so what's being done, Steve, to, to take care of that? If we, and we got to reject the bid first, but what, assuming we will reject the bid.
Yes.
What's happened?
So we talked, Larry and Beth and I discussed all of this, and the plan right now, and Larry can speak to more of the details of this, but the plan is to use Gibbs, who's currently the street maintenance contractor, under that contract, to do some of this exploratory-type digging to verify some of these pipe locations, and also to dig where we were proposing to put the valves in. And then the city staff would actually work on installing those valves. And so at least we'll know more about the system and get some of these isolation valves in, and the price for doing that is much, much more reasonable.
Good.
We've got that pricing from Gibbs that Lyle can put up to show you. It's less $15,000 for Gibbs to do the digging at both locations.
Are the, am I, am I on?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Steve, are the, are the mechanical plans less than adequate in, in, in these two streets, on these two streets?
Uh, I'm not sure I understand. What do you mean?
Well, I mean, you can't just look at the plans and say that one, a pipe is here and a pipe is there.
Problem.
Yeah, that's the.
That's the issue.
Yeah.
Let's see.
Right. I mean, the, the maps, the current sewer maps that the city has is a compilation of late 70s, early 80s drawings, of design. There are not ASBIL drawings from that. The, what we've done in the past is try to digitize some of that and improve the ability to read those maps, but we've not done the exploratory digging to verify locations of, of the pipe. We've had to go off what the drawings have said, and in some cases, that's not been accurate. In other cases, it is. And so the reason we focused on these two locations, on Malone and Jackson, were to directly address high-head issues. You know, I, I think long-term, this is something the city should consider, is looking to try and verify what's actually in the field. But I think starting where there's already problems just makes a lot of sense.
Makes sense.
Have you got any idea what the exploratory work's going to cost us?
It's on the screen.
It's on the screen. It's 7220 for each location, Bob.
I see it now, okay.
It's just under $15,000.
Okay.
And then our own staff is going to install the valves if they're, if lines are indeed underground after they dig. So that is.
So if, if, if the staff charges us less than $900,000, we ought to be in good shape, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have the valves and the valve boxes in stock, so we'd be using some material we already have, and we would just be replenishing that, and that's, again, that's well under $900,000.
Let's, let's hope that these, that these sketchy plans, Beth said there was some stuff that actually was in pencil that, that was.
It's crazy.
You have to verify. But once we find all this out, and we get this digitized, that's going to make a whole lot of difference for people down the road.
Well, Mayor, a good example is today, when they were digging the sidewalk, they dug up a valve at the crosswalk that we didn't know was there, and we had, and hit the line, and we had to relocate that valve, but that, that's not on a plan anywhere. It was 18, it was probably, I say 18, about 12 inches under the ground, and it wasn't on any plan, and it was a two-inch forced main. So that's what we're dealing with, and, and we're trying our best to, to, but if anybody ever wants to see the old ASBILs that I have, they've penciled in drawings, they got little, little dots and signatures. Whether it's there or not, sometimes you throw in dice.
Let's get that all cleaned up. That'll sure help people in the future.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to vote on rejecting the bid from the?
Yes, we do. We do, yeah.
Anybody want, Bobby, you want to make that motion?
I, I make the motion to reject the one bid we had for 905,515.
Good, you have a second?
A second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor. Roll call vote. Louise?
Brian, aye.
Haley Dale, aye.
Jim Hunt, aye.
Rusty Moore, aye.
Bob Wiegel, aye.
Now, that was almost an easy, as easy a vote as, as the left turn removal off of Jackson. So, good. Beth, you got that written down?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Okay, we've got building, zoning, and planning. Wow.
Yes, sir. Any questions about the submitted permits for this month?
Up month.
You'll notice on page 39, we've got a permit total from January 1st to March 31st.
Yep.
And one of my crack team members, which would be Bob Wiegel, called me, I call him Mr. Numbers. He, you like that, Bob? He, he.
Better than sewer boy.
Yeah, he found a discrepancy in the, the last number there on the right, the permit fee total. That should be 14,160, not 1416.
Now, this last, the last year was just, that was just up to, really, pre-COVID, wasn't it? So that's.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So we're 10 permits, roughly 1.8, almost 1.9 in permit value, and 14,000 ahead same time last year in actual permit cost, permit fees, rather.
That's good.
Yeah.
Well, Rusty, I've got a question. So some of the permit fees don't exactly track, like, the estimated construction cost. So what elements make up the fee? So you might have one project that, that, that costs less, but the fee is more, and vice versa. Is that different, different permits that they're getting? I noticed it on the pool ones.
It is, and, and when we get a little further along into some legislation I'd like to introduce, I think it'll be explained a little better. A lot of these Rustier people wanted to do a remodel, and basically, they'll tell me the total cost of the remodel. If it's new construction, I can put a value on it. We have certain things that are broken out separately, like a masonry wall, a pool, fences, things like that. So there's, there's different costs for different things. And I've actually got included in this coming-up presentation what those costs are.
Let's, let's look at page 41 of the, that's the request to amend the Kimley-Horn contract. And Lyle, you want to take that one?
I think maybe Beth probably knows more about that one than I.
Now, that was something that we did talk about. Was it at the commissioner meeting? Or was it, was that at the HCC meeting? What meeting was that?
At the retreat. I think it was brought up at the retreat, actually. But I know that, that Lyle has wanted to have a review for a while now, to get rid of some really old and kind of not any things that aren't really relevant for today's zoning issues that have been in the code forever. And I know Doug has also endorsed getting this done, too. So we talked about it at the retreat, and then Haley had called and said, you know, we've got this contract with Kimley-Horn. Why don't we go ahead and amend it to include this project so that we don't have to go through the whole RFP process for searching for another firm to do this? And we've got good recommendations from both Berry Hill and Oak Hill, who have had this done within the last 10 years by Kimley-Horn, and they were very, very pleased with their work. Kimley-Horn has a team that's devoted to just doing this, zoning code review. So they're, they're very knowledgeable in this field. And they did give an estimated cost, I believe. And I can't remember if I put that in this. And I can't remember if I put that in this memo or not.
Nope, it's in the memo. I think you said, you said, you said that we would, if, if we wanted to go ahead with it, you'd get a, you'd get a fixed price.
That, yes, but I think Kevin had said, it said in today's dollars, he was looking at what they charged, I think Oak Hill, and in today's dollars, it, what was it, Lyle, around 54,000?
Uh, I believe it was 48.
Okay, maybe.
6,000, yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, that sounds like a bargain, huh?
Grab it and run.
Okay.
No, but we would get some actual pricing from them before. I'd like just to have, to get permission to amend their contract and then approach them for detailed scope and, and a price, and then bring it back to y'all for consideration. I think that's.
What, what order do we, what order do you suggest we do it? Just not do anything now or to go ahead and?
No, give us permission to approach Kimley Horn.
And that's not, that costs, that, that just for them to come back and get a, get a price, basically?
And, and give us a detailed scope of work so we know what they're going to do.
Okay. And look at, I think Louise got her hand raised almost.
This is just my earpiece. No. So do we need a, a motion to amend the Kimley Horn contract?
Yes.
No, to allow us to approach them for this project. And then if, if we come back with information that you all think is, is good and you approve it, then we would amend the contract.
So Mayor, I make, I make a motion that we explore, uh, the potential for amending the Kimley Horn contract to have a thorough zoning.
Okay, that's, that makes more sense. Good.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second to Rusty's motion?
A second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Louise?
Louise, Brian, aye.
Haley Dale, aye.
Jim Hunt, aye.
Rusty Moore, aye.
Bob Wigle, aye.
Haley, there's a hand up in front of your face. Is that, is that, you got a question?
I don't, I don't see the hand. I, uh.
Anybody else see that? I'm the only one seeing it. Okay.
I don't see, what, you, like, like literally this?
Yeah. It's not your hand. It's just a fake hand, but anyway.
I don't, I'm sorry. I don't know. I must know a trick. I'm unaware.
If you look down at the very bottom under something that you can, you can get rid of those things, so I.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
I'll talk to you. No, it's gone now. It's gone now. Okay. All right. Hate to tell you, it was my cursor. It's turned into a hand. Okay. Let's see here. We're on the next page, right?
Yes. And Laura Catherine?
Waste collection no matters. Is Laura Catherine, is she on? Or she is still in school today?
Right. She's, um, doing an internship and she cannot, um, do Zoom meetings during the day while she's working on her internship. So she asked me just to report that as of April the 8th, the donations to the Series Society amounted to $59,565. I checked with Lee today and since April the 8th, they've collected an additional 600, $6,480 for a total of $66,045 in contribution. So I think they've surpassed last year's donations amounts at this point.
Good. That fact, that's great because we went through a, a real slow period there. So. And you're still open, Louie, lately, you're still open for contributions, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else? Beth for, okay?
That's all she said. So that's it.
Okay. The next thing is to approve the purchase of Boxwoods for Bellmead Boulevard Bridge Planters. As, that's page 43. Looks like the National Landscape Systems has given the low bid on eight pyramidal, that, how my, how you pronounce that? Pyramidal? Wintergreen boxwood. At $250 each or $2,000. And this, this is 100% funded from Series, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Louise, that suit your fancy?
Absolutely. I trust Martha and Caroline.
Okay. Is there a motion made to accept this?
One quick question. So the, these, we're, we're buying these. These will integrate into what we want to do with the new landscaping plan for Bellme Boulevard as that gets developed.
Yes, because Boxwoods are on the planting list, um, for what we want to use all over. So it will.
Excellent. Excellent. Just wanted to throw that question out.
I'm glad you asked that question, Rusty. I really am. Okay. So is there a motion to approve those, the, the National Landscape Systems bid?
So moved.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Bob, I could second.
Bob seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Roll call, Louise?
Louise, Brian, aye.
Haley Dale, aye.
Jim Hunt, aye.
Rusty Moore, aye.
Moving right along. City Communications no matters. Finance, Lee, tell us about it.
Yes. You have your statements in front of you. Does anyone have questions?
I do. Lee, am I correct in assuming that interest earnings only comes from, from two areas? One is the CD thing and the other is the, uh, what, the fund or whatever they call it?
Uh, LGIP, the pool, investment pool.
Pardon me?
The investment pool.
Yeah. And that's what he, that's what he means.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, that's it.
Then, then define how we get, um, how you show, uh, interest earnings equal the 92,844 year-to-date. And I'm looking at the CD, year-to-date at fiscal year-to-date at 10,504. And, uh, and the other one was like 30,000, wasn't it?
Can you tell me where you are? I'm sorry.
Look on page 51.
51, okay.
Investment, the general fund.
Yes.
Year-to-date is 10,504. And then look on page 53. Interest income of 30,001,9 points.
Well, now, 5, page 51 is the investment pool.
That's, yeah, that's the CD 53.
Page 53 is the CD laddering program.
And 51 is the LGIP, right?
Yes, it's two separate, uh, vehicles. Even though the balance is really close, they are two separate investment vehicles.
Where is the, where is the one on, for the local, the, uh?
51, Bob, 51 is the.
Is it on there?
Fiscal year-to-date 10,504.
Yeah. Correct. And then we, don't we add in the, uh, interest income on page 53?
Yes, they're, now, these are not added together except on the financial statement. So it would be the 10,000.
Aren't you showing 92,000 on the, uh, statement for the two of them?
Let me look. Hang on just one second. Oh, I know what it is. The financial statement you have in front of you is a February financial statement.
Yeah.
The investment statements you have in front of you are the March statements.
Yeah, they're going to be.
But wouldn't that mean that the March, the March should be greater than the 92,000? If that's the case.
Well, the March would be, the March would be 90, almost 100, 100,500.
Where are you finding that now?
The 90,000 on page 53 total plus the 10,000 fiscal year-to-date on page 51.
See, so what I'm saying, the, the March adds up to about 40,000 between the two, uh, year-to-date. Am I, am I, am I all wet, Beth? What, what, what am I looking at?
Well, it, it's, it's two different time periods. Page 53 is March through March 31, whereas, uh, page 46 is through February.
I didn't, I didn't understand what you said, uh, Louise.
I mean, it, the, the way I'm looking at it is that it's two different time periods. We have the supporting documentation for March where the, the income statement goes through February 28th.
You want what?
Bob, the reason we're behind.
Yeah, okay.
Income statements is because the state of Tennessee doesn't report.
I know, I know.
Revenue information timely to us.
Thank you. I'll get back.
But we get our statements from the, um, investment people on a timely manner. So they are going to, two different months.
I, I understand that, that there's a month's difference there, but all I'm seeing, I'm looking at these two sheets. The one on page 53 on the CD says we've made 30,001.
Well, I see where you're at. I'm sorry. If you look on, uh, the CD ladder in page 53, that far right-hand corner is year-to-date. So that's only January through March with this CD laddering.
Okay. Why, why, why don't, why don't we put them bo, both on the fiscal year? So, so Bob doesn't get confused.
Bob herself is talking to him.
Do you hear what I'm talking about, Jim?
Yeah, I do. Sure.
Okay.
If we just, if we just make.
I didn't pick that up.
So just looking at.
Sure, I can change whatever you, whatever you need me to change. These, these numbers came straight off of the first, uh, what was First Tennessee, rising now. Uh, bank statement, but I can.
Well, I, I just want to know what the difference was. And.
Sure, yeah.
I see 92,000 on the statement and then I see like 40 or 50,000.
Right. But you see that, I mean, just to, just so you can always kind of double check at the bottom of page 53, it's 90,000. And then mid, midway through page 51 is 10,000.
Yeah.
Knowing that this is March, of course. We're almost at 100,000. And our financial statements say 90, whatever, 93.
I, I would, I personally prefer to have everything year-to-date instead of, uh, fiscal year. I mean, instead of, uh, calendar year.
Okay, I can change it.
Then I won't question where's the 92,000.
Okay.
Instead, where's the 40 over here? It's really 92.
Right.
All right, that's all I got.
Okay, I did want to, uh, mention one quick thing. I've heard from most everyone about the, uh, budget meeting. Meeting on Tuesday is what it's looking like right now. Um, but I haven't heard from a couple of the committee members. So, um, if you haven't responded to me, if you could, let me know.
Well, just tell me who they are and I'll follow up.
Okay, I haven't heard from Tom.
Uh, you don't have to tell them in public. Just tell them.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Sorry.
I already saw a hand raised, but anyway, that was a guilty party, a guilty party. Then you can get his name called out.
Let's go through it right now. Raise your hand. Come on now.
Okay.
If you haven't responded to her already, respond to her tonight, please. And then anybody else that's not here, tell me about that, Lee.
I'll, I'll get with you on that. Okay. Anyway, that's all for me.
So I guess it's going to be in the morning, Lee. Is that correct?
What's that? I'm sorry.
The meeting. Do we have a time? Just.
Uh, no, no, no. It'll be, um, right now, it's looking like the most convenient time for everybody is Tuesday morning at 8:30.
And you.
Do out a packet ahead of time.
Yeah. In the morning. Thank you.
I got one other question.
Sure.
I noticed we're about 93,000, 94,000 behind where we budgeted.
On what? I'm sorry.
On page 45, uh, shows excess revenue versus, uh, expenses.
Yeah.
And we're 94,000 behind where we budgeted.
Oh, right.
Oh, is there, has anybody analyzed that, why we are? Or, I mean, if, if we keep that same rate, we're, we're going to be close to 100,000 behind at the end of the fiscal year.
Well, I, I do know that we've had some, um, like we had an officer retire. And so that's played into that. And then we had, we've had a couple of, of police officers that have left this year. So if you'll notice, the, the police department is a, is really the one that's the most. But, and we, we've had to buy out, you know, leave time.
I got you. Do you do forecasting on, Lee, to look, to look, to look to the end of the fiscal years to say where we would end up?
Yes, yes.
Okay. If you can, if you, if you think that's going to be, you know, a significant amount, whether that being, whether that's, you know, three or five percent, something like that, let us know what that is.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, Bob? Any other questions? Okay, we've got, uh, the appointment of Tom Curtis of the Budget and Finance Committee. Uh, you, you should have, no, no, that's not right. I got invoices over 5,000. I, I've just got two. Is that correct?
Yes, I didn't have many.
Okay, Commonwealth Chemical, 24,080. And Rate Studies, that's the, uh, Buddy Petty. And we, well, I guess we're going to talk about that anyway, just shortly. 5,000, $5,000. Is there a motion to approve those two invoices over 5,000 or 5,000 or above, let's say?
Mayor, I'll move to approve the, uh, invoices of Commonwealth Chemical, uh, and Buddy Petty.
Thank you, Rusty. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Louise. Let's have a roll call vote, starting with Louise.
Louise, Brian, aye.
Haley Dale, aye.
Jim Hunt, aye.
Rusty Moore, aye.
Bob Wigle, aye.
Great, thank you. All right, we have the appointment of Tom Curtis.
One question to Beth about Buddy Petty. I thought he was going to meet with the Finance Committee, uh, or, or a group of.
No.
Like you and I and Larry.
The commissioners. He does have his rate study completed, Bob, and he wants to meet with the commissioners. I was kind of letting Lee set the budget and finance committee meeting first. So I didn't send out doodle dates for, to confirm date. So. Established, I've, I've got the rate study booklet and I'll, I'm going to have that delivered to everybody soon. And then I will send out a doodle as soon as I can to establish a meeting for Buddy to do a Zoom meeting and review that rate study document with.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Tom Curtis is, uh, I've talked to Tom. Y'all may know Tom. Tom's quite qualified person to be on the Budget and Finance Committee, if you read his, uh, his bow that's attached. But, uh, I don't know that we need to vote, have to vote on that, but, because here's his bow and, and he is willing and able to serve and will be at the, at the Finance Committee meeting that you, that you. Did you get his, did you get his doodle, Lee?
I did not.
Okay, that may be because he wants to be approved first. Anybody have any questions about Tom Curtis? That really is an appointment of, to him, to a, uh, a committee that's not a formal committee. That's a, excellent, I mean, it's a, it's a, my dog is, my, I hope, my dog's not bothering anybody. He's bothering me, but anyway. Any questions on Tom Curtis being appointed to the Budget and Finance Committee? All right. Let's see. Discussion of survey, salary survey and budget finance committee at the, at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. That's not right. Survey at the, oh, anyway, Haley, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, this is just simply on the agenda, um, because I didn't want anyone to not be aware that I am very interested in, um, discussing at length the, um, catching us up on our salary schedules, um, when we are looking into our projected budget for, um, the next several years. So there was a salary audit done in 2017. There were some recommendations made. The commission partially, um, funded those recommendations. And then as, um, the years have gone on, I think we've slipped further and further away from what would be, um, staying on schedule with that. Not in all positions, but in some, um, just some positions disproportionately more than others. So, um, I just want to make sure that, um, we are able to still be competitive with, um, hiring as a city and, um, yeah, um, making sure that if we're, we are looking like, it sounds like we are looking for, um, some officers. I mean, Chief, if you, if you wanted to jump in here and let, let us know if. I mean, Chief, if you, if you wanted to jump in here and let, let us know if, if you're having trouble recruiting at these, at these numbers. I'd love to hear from you.
Um, yeah, we, we ran into that a little bit with our, well, it's on the, the next line item here. But I'll go ahead and address it. We had hired and made an offer, we reported last commission meeting, that we made an offer to Haley Dale, or Haley, Haley Doty. There's gonna be too many Haley's, maybe. So we made an offer to Haley Doty. She was considering Sumner County. And I was kind of surprised that their starting pay was quite a bit more than what our starting pay was, a couple thousand dollars. But she has since, accepted our offer officially. She was due to start on Monday this week. And she called me Sunday night and changed her mind and is going to stay into the teaching profession instead of becoming an officer. So we've got to attack that one and recruit another, another person there. But yeah, that, you know, I think it all depends on where you work, obviously. We've hired, made an offer and she accepted to a, an officer in Ashland City. And she's gonna be getting a, a little bit of a raise to come here. You know, I think it definitely depends on, on where you, where you are. The climate for recruiting law enforcement nationwide is probably not the best time for people to want to get into this field. So it's definitely a struggle that, that not only Bellmead has, but my counterparts all over middle Tennessee have kind of said, good luck. We're all fishing the same pond and it's really tough to, to get people to want to come be a police officer right now, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you for that. So, you know, in general, I think looking into what we can do to make sure that when we need to make hires, that we are able to recruit the best talent. I know the police force is such a huge asset to the residents and it's, it's, it's something they talk about all the time. And I, I think we, we got an email the other day, or maybe it was just me saying, was it all of us that hire more? We need more, just, I love them all, get more, just, you know. So anyway, I really want to look into that and then also be really cognizant of the fact that every year, these insurance premiums are going up for the employees. And then that's getting passed along to them and it's not necessarily matching up with the salary increases. So I just want to make sure we just give it a deep dive and make sure we're being as fair as possible. And I know that's everyone's intention. So I just wanted to basically alert everyone to that and I'll have a better presentation at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting with y'all's approval.
Thanks, Haley. Makes sense. Okay. Facilities no matters. And Chief, you wanna, I know you talked about Haley, Haley Doty, Haley Doty.
Haley Doty.
Haley, Haley, Haley Doty. Anyway, you've got another report, I think, to make, don't you?
Yeah, we did hire, so back in October first, we were awarded a grant for the, from the Tennessee Highway Safety Office. That position was funded by, by THSO. So we essentially have one officer that their, their sole purpose is to work part-time and, and do traffic enforcement. That officer was David Reed until we likened so much that we decided to put him full-time. He took the place of Mark Hill who left us. So we went from about January to March, not being able to find the right fit for that position. I'm happy to report that we do have someone that started on Friday of last week. His name is AJ Yocley. He is a, been a police officer for about twenty years. He's a full-time instructor at the Tennessee Law Enforcement Training Academy. A wealth of knowledge for, in, in his career field. And he, he will be out on Fridays and Saturdays doing nothing but traffic enforcement. So that position has been, has been filled.
Sounds good.
Good.
And I know it's a tough job, but I, I would much rather you do your job of recruiting and the way you do your job of recruiting by knowing, rather than putting out notices and stuff, is you know where to find these people. And I, I think we all appreciate that, so.
It, it definitely takes a, you know, we know what we want here, a community-oriented police officer. And so it definitely takes a, a special person to be the, a fit for here. If they're, and want to, you know, just arrest and fight all day long. This is probably not gonna be a good place for them. But if they're, if they're into oriented and, and love, love talking to folks and, and helping people, then that's the kind of person we want to put out there. It's just, it seems, you know, not to be negative, but it seems like that become, is becoming less and less popular for, for police officers nowadays.
Chief, let me ask you, if you'd be wanting to do something, when you, I, I think this hiring process is so, so critical in the police department. When you make a hire, would you kind of just either send it out to all the commissioners or just to me and I'll send it out? So we'd, so rather than wait for a month and then have to wait, you know, I think it's important, so important for us to know that you brought somebody else on and that any, any little bio on that person too would be really, I think it'd be really interesting and helpful to, I'm seeing a couple of nods on that, so.
I'll be, don't mind sending that out and a little bio. And Alexis, I think, is set to start on, on May the third, so I'll get something to you before she gets started.
Good deal. Thank you. Anything else on the personnel? Beth, you got anything you want to add there? Okay.
No, I'm not looking for anybody on my side of the building, so that's good.
I noticed there's an update for.
One time you were.
Yes, I know. I know.
There is a third item, it looks like, for, to discuss Jan Bennett.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. A lot of people don't know, either don't know Jan or doesn't, didn't know she had an accident here at, at the office. So why don't you, why don't you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, so Jan was working on Saturday, and I don't, I don't remember the date. It was a couple Saturdays ago.
The tenth. It was the shred day. I was here.
The shred day and the floor cleaning day of the police department. We were kind of set up a little differently because they were waxing the floors of the police department. Jan got up to tell one of the officers, hey, you don't need to come through the back door. I think muscle memory kind of took over for him. Hey, I think she clipped, clipped the side of the desk and fell on the floor and broke her arm in several places. We had to, to get an ambulance down here for, but I've, I've spoken with her a couple times. She seems to be doing okay. But she is definitely, I think, I think she broke her arm in about four places that day, so.
And it was, it was her right arm too, right? And she's right-handed, so that's where it's at.
Really unfortunate. And we, we've been, we've been checking on Ms. Jan, make sure she's all, all right, so.
Anything we can do for her?
I tell her to call me, me or her Sergeant, Sergeant Tomlin, I tell her to let us know.
Okay.
Well, she doesn't need her yard mode. I already asked.
Okay. Thanks, Doug. All right, legislation. We're getting down to the bottom of the barrel. Twenty-twenty-one dash zero one, amending the resolution twenty twenty days seventy, seven, the step amounts of fees to be charged with a safe. They'll be for permit applications and other taxes. Lyle, you want to jump into that one?
Yes, sir. Sure will. I'm sharing my screen here. I ran some numbers. One thing I, that resonates with me from the commissioner's retreat was Bellmead is an elite city, as we all know, and maybe some of our, our services definitely are. Maybe some of our permit fees, I'd be up there with some of the other competing cities, if you will. So I did some comparative costs. You see on the screen in your left column there, I know you've got copies of this. I took a six thousand square foot house and ran it through these other three cities. And you can see the, the current cost for just the house, not the driveway or land disturbance, stormwater, any of that, just the structure itself. By the time you, you take a three hundred and seventy-five dollar, which is, which is a value placed per square foot, that value of that house is about two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The first five hundred thousand dollars is sixteen, sixteen hundred dollars. And then it's three dollars per thousand thereafter. So you'll see at the bottom there, that permit is sixty-eight hundred and fifty dollars. Same home in Oak Hill is twenty thousand dollars. Mountain Brook Down in Alabama is twenty-two thousand five hundred. And then the granddaddy is Franklin, where they charge you a privilege tax and an impact fee before they actually charge you for the house. The actual permit for the house is thirty-five hundred. So by the time you total all that, build a home in Franklin, the same size is twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven, before you even put a shovel in the ground.
Hey, Lyle, before you move away from that, can I ask you one quick question?
Sure.
What, what is the, on the Bellmead column, why, what is the subtraction of five hundred thousand?
I'm, I'll show you on the next slide.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Okay, so if you see at the top here left, that's the six thousand square foot home under roof. And the three hundred and seventy-five dollars is the value that the average contractor homeowner is, is paying per square foot. The five hundred thousand is just a standard flat fee. It's pretty standard for all of these other municipalities. It's sixteen hundred for the first half million. And if you look down, it's currently three dollars per square foot. And there's that sixty-eight fifty total. So I'm proposing to raise this. And as you see, the next column, we raised the value per square foot up to four hundred. The third column you see is four twenty-five, the fourth, four fifty. I don't recommend going above the four hundred and fifty dollars. We've got some builders now that can build six hundred and fifty, but this is kind of an average. We've got some that are lower, we got some that are higher. This is kind of the average. So you see I drew a line there on the last two columns, four hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. That's merely to put a value on the house. So in the second to the last column, four fifty is two million and seven. Gonna leave that standard half million at sixteen hundred. That gives the value of two million and two. I do propose raising the dollar amount per square foot to seven dollars from three dollars. By the time you add that up and factor back in that sixteen hundred standard fee, your permit fee is now seventeen thousand. And as you see down there in the green, that's an increase of ten thousand, one hundred and fifty. Now, you can see the next column, you can raise it to eight dollars a square foot, but that value per square foot stays the same. Again, I don't recommend going above the four fifty. But, I mean, this is a, I feel like this is fair. We're somewhat behind compared to other cities. I've actually spoken to Forest Hills and they're getting ready to raise their permit fees as well. So I think that Bellmead is, is the upper echelon. It's the best there is. And I feel like the, that homes go in here, show that. And I think the permit fees ought to reflect that as well. So on the next page, and I know you've got all this in your packet, this is an actual fee chart that I use to determine the fees going forward. So you see up here at the top, recommending the four fifty per square foot. And there's the scale that I use down this left side. Okay, and then over to the right, you see the Board of Zoning Appeals. Those numbers haven't changed for the most part in several years. I'm, I'm recommending those be raised. You can see those numbers in red. And then we have some individual costs. This kind of addresses what you were saying, Rusty. For people that come in that want to do a pool or driveway fence, masonry walls, fireplaces, you can see the cost, the ones in red I'm recommending that we raise. We have swimming pools just about every month, sometimes three and four a month. And currently, they're one thousand dollars. This does not include the stormwater fee. This is strictly for the permit to do a pool or for the deck or the terrace or the driveways you see there. So I think that if these are approved, it will get us up to that, that upper echelon, if you will. I, I think it's time to, to catch up.
Well, I got, I got a couple of questions. How, how are remodeling fee, how, how are you gonna, wanna adjust them?
Well, this is, okay, so there's three ways to do this. One is someone comes in with a new home and I know how many square feet it is because they tell me and I measure it. Because we have to have FAR. I take that to this fee table here. The other is people tell me how much a project is, an interior remodel. There's no way that I can personally put a value on that. Take the contractor's word and they supply me with a bid sheet that the homeowner signs off on part of the contract. That again goes to this same fee table. And then there's additions, which I can figure along, you know, just like a new, new structure.
Okay. And other thing, there's no, since you're comparing Oak Hill and, and you've got Birmingham area, does that not, land value is not even brought into consideration, even though that some of these lots out there in Forest Hills or wherever we're looking, are much larger lots? It doesn't make any difference, is what you're saying.
No, no, it doesn't.
Okay, I just wonder, you know, when somebody goes to sell a house or buy a house, they're gonna look at the land values. But still, if you're just talking about a fee based on what they build in its place, okay, I'm with you.
Um, Lyle, is this square footage calculation what we use? Are we talking about FAR? Are we talking about actual square footage, like?
It would be FAR, everything from the first floor up in the garage. That's the total square footage that we're looking at.
Okay, so still these underground spaces or whatever is not part of the calculation of square footage for a permit?
That is correct.
I mean, would it benefit us to, to do that?
It could if it's a living space. If somebody took a basement and turned it into a living space.
Yeah, like, I wonder if we, you know, if we include basements with ceiling height above seven feet or whatever as part of that calculation as far as a permit goes. I, I mean, it seems like, why not? But.
It, it doesn't count in their FAR, but you know, if you take the finished out basement, you would, you would charge extra in the permit, but it would take away from their FAR.
And I think that's something that our, our zoning review will, will, will look at.
Sure.
Because these guys are all building these, I mean, they're building basements that are not, and they're nine-foot ceilings, eight-foot ceilings. I mean, they're, it may not be in the FAR, but it sure is in the value of their home and in the construction and in their living space. And it's taking up space because it's bringing things higher out of the ground.
And, and they're welcome to build it. I'm just saying, pay for it like, like everybody else is.
Well, I, I kind of buffered these numbers for those instances. I mean, the four fifty kind of takes into account the finished out basement, but not specifically. Again, these are the averages of, you know, the contractors and architects that I talked to on their finished areas. So technically, the basement is not in this number, but then again, it is.
Well, then maybe we could just adjust when, when we, when we, what we publish, to say per square foot of FAR or something. I think it just may be a little bit misleading. If we don't, if we're, if we're using FAR, great. I just had the question, so I feel like somebody else might, but who knows? I'm kind of a weirdo, so.
Well, it's, it's spelled out on the building application, FAR, and it talks about what FAR is and what is not included, so.
Okay.
So do I, I would, I will certainly make a, a motion to approve, but I guess we have to discuss really which, which level we think we should be moving toward.
And when, what is the intent of when these would go into effect?
Yeah, that was my question too.
Yeah.
I'd like them to go into effect as soon as possible.
I mean, I, I don't know the process for this, but it seems like we should give some type of a heads up.
Why don't, why don't we say fiscal year at the, you're not far from the beginning of the new, new year.
Oh, this is legislation too. Don't we have to have more than one reading anyway?
No, yeah. This resolution for us, cover these fees, does it, that you're showing?
These fees over the years by resolution, Rusty, historically, so it's, does not require an ordinance. It's a rare.
This is not an ordinance. This is a resolution.
Thank you. I'm sorry. You're right. You're thinking the way I do. But that's, in this case, it's, I asked that question, I'm virtually here, and I have the answer. Got it. So Lyle, you're recommending the seven per square foot, or per thousand, I'm sorry.
A minimum, yes. Recommending that it be, the value placed on per square foot is four hundred and fifty dollars and then a multiplier of. And then a multiplier of seven dollars per thousand thereafter.
Does our resolution, Doug, tell us when this takes effect?
I think it's immediately upon approval, right? Yes.
Could we, could we actually put a future date in there or not on a resolution?
You can amend it, if you get a motion to approve it in a second, then you can move to amend it by inserting whatever effective dates you want.
I, I agree with Haley, I don't want to surprise anybody that's in the process of getting ready to come before the board or something, let they get a little warning on it.
It does, uh, what do y'all think? I'm, I'm throwing out a number, but what do we think about having it go into effect in ninety days? Hey, we, we, we got a lot of expenses and they're not slowing down.
That's fine.
Or when is the, the new fiscal year, I mean, the fiscal year idea makes, makes sense too, I mean.
July one.
Yeah, I mean, that seems like a, is that ninety, within ninety?
Well, that's.
I can't do the math today.
No, I, I was counting. No, I, I think that, I think that makes a lot of sense, and I think those dates are awfully close to each other, so.
They really are.
That, that's, that makes a lot more sense to just beginning in our new fiscal year, July one. So I'll make that motion that we amend this resolution, uh, to provide that this resolution, when and if approved, takes effect, uh, at the beginning of our fiscal year, July one, twenty twenty-one.
I second that.
Motion second and seconded, roll call vote. That's my.
But we're, we're voting on the amendment, but we're, then we've got to go back to the resolution to talk about the dollar amount, right?
Let's see, did you get a main mo, did you get a main motion there on the, uh, on the resolution? I, I, I understand, I think to be efficient, I think Rusty's motion can be understood as saying, I, I moved to approve the resolution with an effective date of the new fiscal year, forget the amendment, get a second and have whatever discussion you need, then you can vote directly then.
So is it clear in the resolution which dollar, which, which amount, because we've got these different proposed amounts?
Well, highlighted.
But then, I thought that Lyle just said there was, uh, four fifty plus seven dollars, and these things are eight dollars and seven dollars and six dollars and five dollars.
Right, so it, so I think, I see what Rusty's saying, like if we, if we agree that the four fifty column is what makes the most sense, then the resolution is very clear. If we decide four twenty-five is better, it is not. So I see what he's saying. I mean, we probably need to make sure and confirm that that's the, the amount we're choosing, and then.
In the column that we're looking at, there's a line, and I think it's the one Lyle you're recommending. And is that what, does that meet the resolution drafting?
Uh, the line you're seeing, I'm sharing there with the seven dollars, the four fifty is what I'm recommending, a minimum of what I'm recommending.
And is reflected in the resolution, Rusty, yes.
Okay, all right, so I'm good with my motion still.
I'm giving my second.
All right, let's have a roll call vote. Louise.
Louise Bryan, aye.
Haley Dale, aye.
Jim Hunt, aye.
Before, aye.
Bob Weagle, aye.
I knew Bob before.
Okay, but Mayor, can I now go back? I, I still want to go back though to my question that Lyle earlier, because I'm just looking at these, uh, I, I just picked these two random pools. And one of them, the cost of the pool is ninety-one A, the other is one thirty, but the ninety-one A permit fee is higher. Is that because they're doing walls or something else like that, that require different, different pieces?
Uh, which one are you referring to? Is that?
So the, the first one is the first one, uh, Sunnyside Drive. The last one is Shepherd Place, and where it's got estimated construction cost, Sunnyside, it's both for a pool. Ninety-one A per permit fee was fourteen hundred, but the one that was, uh, one hundred and thirty thousand, the permit fee's twelve hundred.
Yeah, they may have a pool and a spa, and it may be hardscape wall, yeah. It's, it's looking out on the permit itself, but not in the.
Got it, okay, that, that's what I wondered, so, and, and that makes sense now looking at this chart.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Mayor, I've got two other things I'd like to.
Really quick, so I just have one more question on the pools. So we have a flat fee listed as recommended. In the future, when we get these reports, will a pool just be thirty-five hundred or whatever?
Unless it goes a certain dollar amount, which I will need to figure out, and what it does, I mean, there's some pools out there that could be three hundred fifty, four hundred thousand, I will take it to the fee table and treat it like new construction on that graduated scale.
So above a certain size?
A certain dollar amount.
Dollar amount, yeah.
Certain dollar amount.
Yeah.
And we have not determined that yet.
I haven't gotten that far yet, no. It is the same formula that they've been using, and I think currently it's any pool that's above, I think it's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, I take it to that sliding scale and treat it as new construction. Otherwise, it'll be a flat fee of thirty-five hundred.
Okay.
Go ahead, Lyle.
Okay, in your packet, you've also got street cut permit fees, and I'm gonna ask Larry to elaborate on some of this. I think this fee's been three hundred dollars for several years. And you can see in two thousand nineteen, there were thirty-two permits, there's not a lot of permits on this. Two thousand twenty, twenty-five permits, and, and Larry and I have sat down and estimated, we may have twenty-seven this year. Uh, and we're proposing to raise those fees from three hundred to five hundred. And if you see on there, it says Metro charges five hundred plus another twenty percent of the total cost to restore and pay. Larry, if you want to elaborate briefly on that?
Yes, sir, um, Lyle, um, commissioners, the, uh, fee that we get received now is not really, sorry, not really enough to, to pay for, if we have to pay for the repair or cover the repair. And a lot of times in Metro, Brentwood actually charges a bond, we don't want to get into that, but they make you put down a bond of forty-five hundred dollars anytime you cut the pavement. Metro has, has that caveat as well. And it's based off a percentage, that's where that, so that, that twenty percent comes in. I, I would like, uh, I would like to, uh, increase it to five hundred to help cover our cost of the work in, within the right of way that, that we occur. And we do a lot of, I spend a lot of time going back and forth on these street cuts and right of ways and following up on them. And I think the city needs to reimburse our time.
Larry, with the five hundred dollars, cover the, your costs?
What would happen is, is it would cover, we could go back to the contractor on them, but it would cover, it would cover our time and, and material that we would have to occur. Uh, if it's a major cut, uh, we go back to the contractor on that, and we will make them come back and fix it. But in the meantime, we've dealt with it oh, three or four times, uh, where we've had a bad patch, and they just go forever and ever until we can get it fixed. And if we have to infrared it, uh, this would cover a, and, you know, we get enough to cover some emergency infrared, and, and it would cover our overhead cost.
We just wanted to get this in front of you today to, you know, get some thought and discussion. And next month, we're gonna come back with some comparative costs, more, more hard numbers for you. Just wanted you to be aware of this.
It's the same thing with the stormwater.
Yes, and I'm gonna ask Steve Casey to elaborate on that, but our stormwater user fees, uh, were established about ten years ago, and they have never been raised. And we basically operate in the negative with those fees. We're not even breaking even with those. Um, I'm gonna let Steve elaborate on that.
Sure, well, um, yeah, like Lyle said, that was, uh, we established those fees, it brings in roughly a hundred thousand a year. And there was never an intention when it was first instituted to cover the whole program. It was meant to sup, supplement. But you're exactly right, Lyle, that, that no fees have been increased, and that's not, um, when the stormwater utilities were first being put out, uh, and, and communities were adopting that as a way of funding their stormwater programs, it was not uncommon to have a set fee and then just kind of leave it there. But more and more, it seems that communities are building in, uh, some sort of, maybe every few year review of that fee in their ordinances to try and keep those up to date. So I think this is a, a great example of doing that and then setting it up. My recommendation would be to set up the ordinance to have an automatic review on some frequency, just to review that, maybe five years or something along, along those lines, to see where that fee is relative to the expenses.
Steve, what is the cost related to? Like if it needs to be rate, like what is costing more money than we are paying?
So, yeah, that's a great question. Under that umbrella of stormwater management in the city, things like creek cleaning, um, is probably one of the single biggest, um, fees there. I don't know exactly how it's accounted for there in the city, but portions of, you know, Larry and Lyle's salary, uh, I think could, could be considered, uh, relative to the stormwater program, certainly in terms of complying with your MS four permit. And then, you know, the maintenance of the stormwater infrastructure within the city, um, and, uh, capital improvement projects. You know, for example, um, it's been a few years ago, probably the largest, most recent project was on Signal Hill. And as I recall, that was a little over two hundred thousand dollars. So that was a one, one project that virtually doubled the revenue of, uh, what the fee was bringing in, so.
You mean one property owner?
I'm sorry?
One property owner?
Oh, no, 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 so the, the, the cost of that project on Signal Hill, it, it actually included installing new storm sewer to divert stormwater from underneath someone's house where it was currently flowing, and install a new storm sewer in the middle of Signal Hill, bring it down to Linwood, and do some improvements at the intersection of Linwood and Glen, Eden. But all of that, that whole project was a little over two hundred thousand dollars. And so my, my point is, the cost of that single project more than doubled an annual revenue of the stormwater user fee.
Yeah, if you'll look on the second to the last page in the middle there, you'll see what all these fees go for. And you'll also see the last five years of the revenue and expenses. And just wanted to bring this up so that next month, Steve and Larry and I will get together and give you more concrete information and comparative costs to other cities and what they're charging and their population. Um, and on your last page there, you'll see the, the fee calculation and how that, that is calculated. The main tier of the level, uh, the medium level there is probably the largest, uh, it's, it's for lot totals of forty thousand to seventy thousand, that may be the largest, um, percentage of, of fees collected. But just want to get that on your radar for next month.
Thank you all, I just want to make sure that if we're doing, um, larger product, projects or projects for the city, that that shouldn't fall under some type of capital improvement versus trying to cover those things through a stormwater fee. But, um, I'm sure you all thought about it more than I have, so maybe, uh, I look forward to seeing that.
Good discussion items, okay. If there's nothing else, we'll go to other matters. Uh, I have a couple of items to talk about very quickly. One is the, uh, updating on the Bellmead Boulevard, streetlights. Uh, they finally have resumed, uh, the fixture replacements. They went for, they went dark for about three weeks, that's not a good word to use, dark, but they did go dark for three weeks. Now they're back up, and I think they're moving fairly quickly, Larry, aren't they, month, they're getting, they're getting pretty fast now.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the other thing, Larry and I met with, um, with, uh, Brad and, and Joey from NES and talked about that one steel pole down near Tan that has a wooden pole right next to it. We talked about couldn't they, could they not put the new lights on that wooden pole? And after about, uh, thirty minutes of us trying to persuade them, they still said no, because that, if you look at that pole, it's got, it's got several features on it that they cannot change in that, in that pole. I know Larry, you want to go into any detail, we can, but it's, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a very, it's, it is not a standard steel pole. It's, it's got a lot of different things on the top of how they, how they actually access the, the fixtures up the top with their, with their, uh, controllers down on the ground, uh, with the wooden pole also has connections that we need. It's got the, it's got a, uh, the, the, a meter that, that times our, uh, watering system, and we'd have to relocate some of that. But it's, it is, long story short, we can't do it. It's, it's, uh, and we, we tried every angle, didn't we, Larry?
Yes, sir.
And, and they, uh, they just wouldn't, they just said, no, can't do it. And, uh, once, once, when I'm long gone, we'll be having steel poles everywhere on the Boulevard, and then we will just replace that steel pole with another steel pole, so we'll be able to do it. But it's, and it's, and it's, we'll, we'll do the best with what we can hand, and, and, and I, and I look forward to getting the rest of these lights up, and I think everybody else would agree with me on that, so. With that, I would like, Lyle, you've got those photographs I, uh, that I sent you today, real quick, just to, uh, uh, this was a pet project of mine, and, and Gray remembers this from the, uh, the night for twenty-ten, twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen. Those lots of, on Deer Park, uh, that John Foster did that beautiful job of landscaping his. Well, we've got a new, uh, resident now, and this is, this is the, show the second one too. Uh, this, this kind of move these pictures. This is the, the lot that belongs, that belonged, used to belong to Bart Ashley, uh, that now belongs to, uh, is it, is it Tom Ware? Uh, he's married to Anne Marie and Martin McNamara's daughter, not Ridley Wells's wife, but the, the other daughter. And this is what he's just done, they laid the site out there yesterday, and it is, it is gorgeous. They, he's also taken on the responsibility of going a little bit further to the left and doing part of Vanderbilt's property. So this is, now that's what happened overnight, it was, it was dirt the day before, but it's now this beautiful grass. So I just, that ties right up next to John Foster's property that we love so much to the right. So drive down Deer Park and you'll see this beautiful new landscaping that's gonna be, of course, he's put trees down there too. It's all irrigated, so real proud of what, what's happened right there. So we want you all to see it, and that was just taken yesterday, so. Uh, with that, anybody got any questions? With, with that, uh, let me, uh, turn this over for a short time, hopefully, to, uh, to Doug, to Doug Berry. And, and I'll ask Lyle, can you, can you, anybody here from the, from the public, can you exclude them from this particular?
Mayor, before, mayor.
Well, maybe I should explain the procedure, mayor, before we do.
Okay, Rusty has something to say.
I, I'd just like to say before we, uh, go into an executive session, uh, while we're still in a public session, that I want to urge this commission, uh, to, to, to listen to and look at the concerns that the residents of Walnut Drive have brought before us today, uh, that they brought before the Historic Zoning, uh, Commission. These are things that, uh, that we all just need to look into and think about, and certainly take their concerns very seriously. That's a, a group of individuals who have come together and they have asked the Historic Zoning Board to rehear a matter. Zoning Board refused to do so. They've now asked the commission, uh, to look into the, the, uh, the whole matter and the whole, uh, the whole of the situation. And I just want to urge us to do that, because I think their points are very well taken.
Doug?
Yes, well, thank you, Rusty, thank you, uh, Mayor. As you can imagine, both before and after the decision on three twenty-five walnut, I've been getting a lot of questions from commissioners about, uh, about that procedure, about what this commission's role is, if any, and a lot of other aspects of that case. And so I had met with the mayor this morning, talked to the mayor this morning, met with Beth this morning, and, and thought that maybe the time was good for a, a meeting with the commissioners and the city manager and assistant city manager just to, um, have a meeting with your attorney to discuss what the rights, liabilities and options of the city were. And there is a recognized exception to the Open Meetings Act or Sunshine Law for, uh, meeting with your attorney concerning either pending litigation, which we don't have, or a situation that might result in litigation, which I think, we, we hope it is not, but it's entirely possible that, that one or more parties would appeal the decision of the Starz zoning commission. So I do want to use that, um, exception to meet with the commission, uh, right now, and also. exception to meet with the commission uh right now and also with the city manager and assistant city manager. Would ask that um the all other department heads and city employees be excluded from the meeting and also members of the public who are still on the call. Uh, there will be no action taken tonight a- as a result of this meeting. There will be no further action taken in the meeting at all other than a motion to adjourn. So with that, um I'll wait until that is accomplished, Lyle, and then we'll 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 talk to the commission briefly. So thank you all for your understanding. E E D may stay. Well, I I don't, we need minutes. Uh, E D, uh, I've I've done that. I've seen that done both ways. You may, I think you may stay as city reporter just, but I don't know that we need minutes because they're not going to become public anyway, so.
I think that's everybody. I think.
Is there, will there be a recording?
No.
There's a recording. We really don't need
It's being recorded right now, so.
Uh, E D, it's up to you. You may stay. It's um, I I guess that I've seen meetings where they kept the recorder there, whether or not. So let me, I'll I'll cut to the chase pretty quickly.
I was saying, Doug, we are
The Zoom call is being recorded right now. The Zoom call is being recorded.
Can we keep on recording it?
Well, E D, if it's all right, I would recommend the fewer people as possible, so I would recommend that we just step out of the meeting.
Okay.
That's all right.
Zoom call is being recorded. Is that clear to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's so good to do that. Continue, continue.
The recording itself will not be, well, it'll be a public record, but not be subject to disclosure of the public record because it's attorney client advice. So here we go. So.
Okay, but if we post a link.
Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be better?
It's going to be connected to the
We need to discontinue the recording once we approve, or it will be connected to the link to the whole meeting.
And anybody
Oh, I can, I can edit this.
Discontinue.
Okay.
Your recording, absolutely.
Okay, thanks, Lyle.
This is the first one of these I've done where on Zooms when I've been the attorney. I've attended maybe five this year, so this is not unusual to proceed. So, so as you all know, in 2019, the city adopted uh historic overlay or conservation overlay, which is sort of historic overlay light, is that called? Authorized by state law, established historic zones, created a historic zoning commission, and then hired, we had a consultant, Jane Coleman Paton, from historic zone, the Tennessee historical commission helped us with the initial statute ordinances. And then we hired a Phil Thomason to help us develop our start our guidelines to be applied to demolitions, new construction and additions within Bellmead. And that commission is met now uh since, gosh, uh, what, a little over a year? Is that right, Lyle?
Yes. Oh, yeah, about a year and a half, yeah.
And then five, five members on it. And um we uh so uh the procedure with the start of zoning commission is that uh the applicant, the owner or their architect, who brings that project before the commission, and they make the decision about whether it should be torn, the project should be torn down, demolished, or may maybe torn down, or in the case of an addition or new construction uh makes judgments about the uh qua- the uh architecture, size, bulk and other features of the building according to the guidelines. Those guidelines are pretty broad. I I don't want to use the S word, subjective, but they're pretty broad, pretty flexible, and they have a lot of considerations like uh compatibility, uh harmony, things such as that. So they have a lot of discretion. In 325, I I did y'all get the memo I attached to?